Bottom line for development. I think it's also been good for the builders and developers when they come in here. We have redone some of our practices on the front end. So when someone comes in with a project, we do pre-development meetings now. These are the things that you can expect. This is where the water line is. This is where the sewer line is. And so the communication's a lot better. When they start to do their construction meetings, we have pre-cons with them. They know exactly what Randy, they know what Randy is looking for. And so there should be no surprises throughout that process. And that has, by jettisoning our contract with BV, it's allowed us to provide better customer service to our builders and developers.
So building permits, you have 575 for the revenue.
Yes.
Which we've only collected 336.
Yeah, that's through, these numbers are through, are they through May or June?
They're through May.
Okay, so that's just reflected above.
Yeah. When you see the YTD stuff, it's, and development is very cyclical, if you will. A couple of years ago, when they did the apartments, when Kyle did the apartments, he came in on August the 3rd with a check for fees.
Right.
And we busted the budget on the 3rd day. In fact, Bernie joked that he could take the rest of the year off, and he's already met his budget.
Well, we had budgeted 300, and that's why.
Yeah.
It's a big jump in our budget, but it's because we've collected so much more and expect that. Okay.
And the district's coming in, and we're going to be doing those fees. There's some medical office buildings that we know for sure are coming in. We're going to be doing those. So actually, I think this 575 is probably low.
What? Well, I assumed you were being somewhat conservative.
Yes, yeah. It's just, with the way, with the way construction's going now, it's just, that's really harder to predict than sales tax.
Okay, great.
So that's what we got in development. Those are kind of the highlights there. Any questions on those?
So the savings we will see from hiring the new person will be coming out of group 65, consultants and professionals, contractual services, and engineer, city engineer, correct?
Consulting, where's the BV one, Candy?
Consultants and professionals.
Yeah, which one, you know the number off the top of your head?
58401.
401, yes. Yep.
Okay. So it looks like we're projected to save 20,000 roughly?
Well, you're doing, you did 189, and we dropped it to 10,000. So you're going to save 179,000.
Okay.
We were spending a lot of money with BV. If you know, we did 250 in...
But then with the salary increase.
Yeah, so that'll be made up with, yeah, exactly. So the salary increase is going to go to 58, 100, under personnel. So we did 84,000. We're doing 110,000 this year. So we're kind of putting Randy's fee in there, and a little bit of Tony's in there as well.
Okay. Definitely shows it's savings, for sure.
Yes, 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 yes. I'm sorry, you're, we came to the same bottom line, we just got there.
Yeah.
Fire, again, it's virtually unchanged. We did a lot with fire department last year. There is a 3.5% COLA for that group as well. It's, again, it's essentially the same budget that they had last year. Legislative, we do have a significant increase in the special events line item, and I'll get to some of that later on. We've had much discussion over Christmas lights. I pray to God we do not have a discussion tonight on Christmas lights. I will tell you that we will put a special line item in for, in city services for, I don't know, I don't know, Pat, can we put Christmas in the budget legally? We may put holiday events.
Yeah. Celebratory lights.
Celebratory lights. Celebratory illumination. We will be putting the $17,000 in the city services budget.
Beautification.
Beautification?
Beautification.
Okay.
Celebratory illumination sounds like far away.
So on the dues and memberships, that's a lot of the things that we are sponsoring?
Dues and...
No.
No. That's city secretaries, city finance officers.
Yours.
TML.
TML.
Dues and memberships, that's, memberships for my state and local chapters, and then TML registration for all of mayor and council.
Yeah, which we did today.
Got it.
Yes, we did do that today.
Your TML convention comes out of this line item.
Okay.
So, any other questions in legislative?
But to yours, the sponsorship is...
Well, when you have promotions, that would be under supplies, and that's 58269. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Got it, there it is.
Yes.
I thought that Eric was coming in that direction.
Yep, that's where it is. That's the one I wanted.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, so...
Now, have we talked about what we're doing with that yet?
Not yet.
Okay. I would like for us to consider the East Parker County Library as to potentially getting some of these funds that we have.
Okay. I think, and I'm not going to take a position...
Right. We'll talk through it whenever we get to, but...
I think what we need to do is probably at some point, when the mayor's here, is we need to put a policy together for what do we want to sponsor, what do we want to promote, things of that nature. I think we need to have that discussion, and, because it makes it easier for staff to go, okay, we can do this, or, because we get requests a lot.
Yep.
And I imagine if the recession hits, we'll probably get more requests. So I think we, that's probably a policy decision that we need to have at a later date, or a policy discussion at a later date, when the mayor's around and we can all...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you think that we have, we're allocating enough in our budget to be able to do, or should we bump up the line item?
We should probably, I would, I would bump this up, and we can cut from other areas. I would bump this up 5,000, 7,500, whatever.
Okay.
Because I'd rather have more funds in there, because, you know, you may want to do something, and Sean may want to do something, and Nate may want to sponsor the Texas Rangers.
I ain't going to touch on that again.
Cowboys need some help, so.
Yeah, I think that would be wise to just make sure we have enough, and as we create our policy for how we're going to, how that's implemented, so that, I mean, we had some discussion, I did, with Brian and Bill regarding, you know, you got to be careful. We can't just dole out money to any nonprofit that requests money, so we have to have a policy in place that makes sure we're doing it in a legal way and appropriate, so.
It definitely would make it a whole lot easier for staff to manage it.
Having a policy.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
So as long as we've got a good budget that we think we can work with, I think, let's put that in the budget, and we'll put together a policy. Okay?
Municipal court, again, it's relatively the same. I didn't change too much in court. As you know, we sworn in the new judge two weeks ago, and so, and by the way, I think he's done a phenomenal job getting started. Spent some time with him last Friday. I think he spent some time with Michelle, and he's, he is, we swore him in on Tuesday, and he was already in the office Wednesday, so.
That's great.
He's, he's moving forward, and I like him. I like him a lot. So any questions on court? Okay. Police, so a couple of things here. The big one is going to be your salary increases. Salary and personnel costs are reflective of the two officers that Chief West asked for in April of 2021. It does not include the two additional officers that Chief West alluded to in that same presentation. She and I had this discussion. We may get a request at some point in the future, but I think we're going to try to stay with where we are now for these two officers. I did want to highlight something to you guys, and if you look at 58418, 10-007-58418, that is contractual services. That is what we have been paying Parker County for dispatch services. If you notice, that number's jumping from $71,500 to $112,000.
Why?
It's a 57% increase. We met with, the mayor and I met with Sheriff Athier, did I say that correct? I call him Russ, I want to be professional. We met with Sheriff Athier, and I believe his chief deputy or his administrative deputy. We were told that they are going to essentially charge us for an additional FTE.
Or half an FTE. What's FT stand for?
Full-time employee.
Okay.
And this is just the beginning of a three-year escalation in dispatch fees, ultimately ending in anywhere from $250,000 to $300,000 a year in dispatch.
So, hold on, so we're looking at last year's 71,500.
Yes.
To potentially three years from now, 200?
I'd say 250.
$250,000?
Yes.
What are our other options?
Yeah, glad you asked. The city of Hudson Oaks is in the same boat as we are. It's not quite clear if Reno's in the same boat as us. We asked for that contract, we still haven't seen it yet. Alito ISD is now being charged dispatch services for the first time ever, although theirs is slightly discounted, it's $18,000. Springtown is interested in, they do their own dispatch. We're having a discussion with them in Hudson Oaks, and when I say discussion, it's, we're just kicking tires, like, hey, is this something y'all want to do, or do we have other options? So we're looking to maybe combine efforts with other communities to do some sort of dispatch, centralized dispatch. That may include the city of Weatherford as well. I haven't had any discussions with those guys. I did with Hudson Oaks, and I have with Springtown, and there is interest there to see if we can, if we can work together for some cost savings.
So essentially, we'd be signing a contract for this 112 for this year?
Yeah.
And then looking into other options?
Yes.
For next year's budget?
Yes.
Was our, was our percentage the same as Hudson Oaks?
Yes.
Okay.
They're...
Never clear on that.
Their letter got lost in the mail.
Could ours could just get lost, and maybe the next year?
That's a great question.
So, last year's, I'm going to go back to some, last year's dispatch fee, the contract out, was there anything on there as far as what they could charge us as far as, for the next year, like, you know, for instance, that you would put something in there saying is, is, you know?
No, I don't think there was.
There's nothing in there that...
They can charge you...
It's year-to-year.
They can charge you whatever.
Do, do we think we could figure out a cost savings sooner than later?
I'm going to say that that's a possibility.
And what, what do we think a cost savings would be, would it be more in line with 71,000?
I don't even want to entertain what that is at this moment.
We're kind of pretty short notice here to get something done, so I think we're kind of bound for this year.
I'll put it this way, this is one of my priorities that became a priority after me and the mayor met with the sheriff's office. And the city of Hudson Oaks was in that meeting. We conveyed that meeting to the city of Springtown. I know that Hudson Oaks and Springtown are having some discussions. I'm going to try to see if we can get some, something going in the next 10 days with, with those two communities, to see if this is something that we can do in this fiscal year and not, and not wait.
Are you going to reach out to Weatherford?
I, yeah, that would probably be...
The reason I say that, I know they're moving into a huge new facility.
I think that's also one of the issues, why we couldn't do it this year.
And I think that's part of the sheriff's issue, they've got no room to expand at this point.
Yeah, yeah. When we got the letter, Carrie was very pleased, obviously, tongue-in-cheek with the, with the increase, and so it, it, that's the most stunning thing that I've seen in this budget process, was that, was that request from the sheriff's office.
Is this an ongoing contract? How does that, like, I know this is talks for our budget, and when this renews for this, does this contract renew at the same time, and are we locked in?
It's a year-to-year, it starts October 1, ends September 30. I think there's probably an out clause in there somewhere.
Okay, that's what I was going to, alluding to, yes.
I got the feeling from the sheriff's office that we're kind of, would burden be the right word, maybe? I don't, I think if we wanted to get out of the contract, I don't think they're going to sit there and fight us to keep us, if that makes any sense.
Would you say this is similar to, like, a telephone company, internet service, that doesn't want to provide something anymore, so they say, if you want to remain in this product, you will be...
Yes.
Charged much, at a higher rate?
I think, yes. I think that the, the call volume in Willow Park, Hudson Oaks, is going up. I certainly think that the sheriff's office has a certain point, that they're going to need to add personnel, and I totally get it. But I also know that, that it's not the quaint little service anymore, and so if it becomes to a point where we can do it in-house better, or cheaper, or even the same, then we have control over that. And I'd like to, I'd like to explore those options.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other discussion?
Any other discussion on police?
Police.
Okay. City services, that's your catch-all. One of the things, this is typically what Michelle deals with, but this is where all the electric bills are paid, and the lights and whatnot. We used to have some personnel costs in there. We jettisoned those over to the sewer fund, because primarily, that's what they did. And so, let me pull that one up real quick. Yeah, here we go. But we also, if you notice at the very bottom, we did increase the parks line item to 75,000. That's, we doubled it, plus. I think we have some, parks is one of those things that, I was telling the staff earlier today, if we had never built this park, I don't think we'd realize how popular it actually what is, or could be. It is used every day. There was a mother out there today, and it was 105 degrees, and she's out there playing with her kid, and so it is, it gets used quite a bit, and I think it has got a tremendous ROI, not, maybe not a financial ROI, but a, a...
Community.
Community ROI. And so we've got some aggressive goals coming from the Parks Board this, this year, and I think we need the funding to, to meet those goals.
Question?
Yes.
On item 58270, MV fuel?
Yes.
We have a big jump.
Yep.
Is that just anticipating unknown?
Yes.
So a post?
Yep, that's, that's me thinking there's going to be $1.00 gas when I was writing budget.
Or $7.00 gas.
Yeah. That's, that is, and that's...
Possibility?
Yeah, and that's a line item that if it doesn't get used, you can transfer the funds later, or whatever you need to do, but that's also a line item that, that I think we can all agree, city vehicles need gas.
Yep.
So, yeah, that was, I was going to put that out.
Making sure.
Yes, yes. So, that's your general fund in a nutshell. Any questions, concerns, issues? Moving on to the water funds, water, wastewater and drainage are your enterprise funds. Your total revenues out of your water fund's going to be roughly $3 million, 3.1. Your expenses are going to be right at, at that. There's a little bit of a surplus, but not a whole lot to, to really mess with. We do have, so this is the exception to the 3.5%, we do have aggressive pay raises for public works personnel. One of the things that Michelle, when she first sat down, when we first started writing the budget and working on this budget in late April, was our guys are sought after. Your public works department is one of the best in this region. Michelle, how many times did the city of Weatherford come over and recruited our guys in the last month?
Four that I know of. No lie.
Yeah.
No, I believe it, I believe it.
When they go to water school, they actually put the city hall's address on, so every time they get a recruitment thing from another city, we tend to not give it to them. The city of Brownwood has reached out.
Really?
Yes. Michelle should be committed for putting the public works crew that she has together. They're certified, they work hard, they're young, they want to, they want to do well. And so one of the things that she wanted to do, is she wanted to make sure we're compensated at a market value for these guys. Now, they're still not, I mean, we're never going to be able to compete with Fort Worth or someone like that, but you have a crew here that, I think the key thing is, they want to stay here, they want to work here, they are invested into this city and this system.
A bunch of those have longevity with us, don't they?
Yes, yes.
That speaks highly.
Yes. Yeah.
They're great. They're, they're truly are the unsung heroes. I mean, they have helped me tremendously, and I thank Michelle all the time for allowing me to, to use their, their labor, and especially with the brokerage retention over the past several months, they have really, really have helped out tremendously. There's no way I would have been able to do any of it without them.
Awesome. Interesting about the freeze event we had in February 2020.
Yeah, I mean, they kept the system running, you know, stealing blankets from the mayor, so.
I used to crock pot them up, and it worked.
I, I think the key, the key takeaway is, we want to keep these guys around, and we want to keep them around for the foreseeable future. Some of the increases, one of the more notable increases that you're going to see is fuel, obviously, as we discussed earlier, but another hidden one is chemicals. Our KIMs budget went up, where am I looking for KIMs here?
It's probably double that one there.
Group 55?
Yep. Our KIMs budget went from 12,000 to 35,000.
Chlorine and another.
Yes, yeah, yeah. If you have a swimming pool, you'll understand the delivery there.
Are they having issues getting it?
Not yet.
Okay.
I think our suppliers are keeping us...
Because I know the pool companies are hurting right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We also doubled what we anticipated in Fort Worth water. When we wrote the budget last year, we didn't really know, so we, we put that from $50,000 line item to $100,000 line item. And the big one at the end of the fund that Leah and I had many discussions over, and so we'll get this out of the way now. There's a $400,000 transfer, not to the general fund, but to the wastewater fund. And you'll see that in the wastewater budget as reflected as, as income or revenue. Your sewer system, we've discussed this as nauseam, has about half of the accounts that the water fund does, and we have, you know, obviously issued debt for a wastewater treatment plant. We have permitting coming in for additional housing, so we know we're going to need it. We were hopeful to have something online soon to help cover this, we were hoping to have more homes online soon. I think some of the lag of the supply chain, this is where it hits us, is this right here. We did a good job of having everything prepared for the water system. I think we just, circumstances caught up with us on the wastewater fund. So we are transferring the water over, it's from one enterprise fund to another, but that's, I wanted to point that out to you guys. Any questions on that particular issue?
That is, we have, that's debt.
Debt.
That's coming due.
Yes.
On the package plant.
Yes, yes, sorry, sorry, thank you. That is the...
We've seen it coming for years.
The existing package plant, correct?
So do our projections looking out beyond this year, it's coming here, I mean, we really don't know, or is it going to take it year by year?
It depends how fast the houses get online. I mean, you, in April, we permitted, what, 200 homes? Between the Wilks development and the development over by Hunter's Glen, we permitted roughly 200?
The guys that were...
Yeah. So, you know, it just depends on how fast those, those guys come online. You had to borrow the money, build the plant, and you're going to have to, you're going to be floating some of this for a while, a while being, maybe a year or two, but you're going to have to float this until your development gets on board. Wastewater is one of those things that you can't really wait until the houses get here, and then you go build it. You have to, if you remember, we started this process two years ago. So, that's, that's just it.
On the next one, group 75 capital outlay, 100,000 for equipment heavy?
Yes.
What are we anticipating we need to buy?
We buy the skid steer?
Yes.
Yes. How old's the skid steer we have?
25 years old. What are you saying?
Skid steer.
Skid steer, like a bobcat.
Yeah. It's 25 years old, obviously, it's clearly it's safe. Is there any other heavy equipment we were going to buy? I'm trying to remember our meeting.
It actually does get...
Because there's another thing, there's another piece in there, too, is it, is it the backhoe?
No, it's the skid steer.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Michelle.
It's a backhoe attachment.
That's what it was.
Oh, and the air compressor.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
Air compressor.
Oh, air compressor.
Yeah. Now, here's the thing, just because that's used, comes out of the water fund, it's going to get used throughout, but it's got to come out of some line.
Like the city secretary's office.
Of the whole city?
Of the whole city. I mean, they use that skid steer to, to load those files onto that truck. Yeah, I mean, they put them on pallets, and then they used it to load it up on the truck. I have video of it, I'm like...
So what, our connection with Fort Worth comes online later this year?
You are connected to Fort Worth right now.
Right.
When that pump station gets completed, and the pumps arrive, you will be, you will be fully connected, and the ability to tap into 3.5 million gallons.
Okay.
I think that's probably going to be sometime September, October, of when it'll be completed. The, and here's where it is right now, is when we pull water off of Fort Worth, it's essentially an open tap, and it's just running. Imagine your water hose just running out in your yard. That's what it is. Now, it's flowing into our tanks and everything else, and we're not stressing the wells out as near as much as we were in the past. Once we have the ability to control the water coming in, we won't be drawing near as much in November, December, January.
We'll rely on our well system?
Yes.
Too?
The plan is to use the wells as much as we practically can, and then peak off of Fort Worth.
Right.
Obviously, we're going to use Fort Worth sometimes, and this will also allow us to do some well rehabilitation and some well work, you know, during the, the non-peak hours and so on and so forth, but. Wastewater fund, again, there's the transfer that's in there, and to your point, Leah, it does cover debt. Your debt service is roughly going to be 600,000 between all the funds. So, that includes your package plant, that also includes the new wastewater treatment plant. The package plant, we may be able to sell that off once we have the new one completed. Obviously, we take the proceeds of the sale and apply it to the debt, so that's where I'm thinking you're not going to have near as much reliance on the water fund in the future.
Backing up on, back to water for one second.
Sure.
When do we anticipate replacing some of our tanks, the large, the...
The overhead tanks that elevated?
Yeah.
I think, I would, I would have wanted to do it this year, it's probably going to be closer to next year. It's probably going to be closer to next year. They need to be replaced, there's some ground storage tanks that need to be placed. We're looking at consolidating, there's three elevated storage tanks. We're looking at consolidating to two. I think the one by Cross Chapel, we may not need at some point, especially with the water line coming from that... Essentially, it goes straight down Micus. We can just bore underneath the interstate and provide services over there without that elevated storage. But...
But that's not in here yet.
No, it's not in here, no, sir. No, sir. I would have liked for it to be that way. I think I'm a little gun shy, given the construction delays and everything else that we have with Fort Worth Water, before I start another project of that magnitude.
Did we apply to water development for it though?
We put a PIF in.
The ten, okay.
Yeah, we put a PIF. And we won't know anything on the PIF until March.
Okay.
So, we did put a PIF in them. PIF is a project information form. It's a one pager from a... It's basically water development, where what do you want? I want some elevated storage tanks, how many you think it's going to cost this much? Hey, well, we're rich in funding. It's tender for water projects. So your wastewater fund, we've already gone through that. Drainage fund should not take too long, we're just starting this one up. We were conservative on the revenue projections first full year, although I do think it's going to be slightly higher as more and more properties come on and they start paying the fees. And so, and obviously, we have an opportunity to vote on some debt related to drainage in August. That debt will not go on your interest and sinking, it will go as a revenue bond, and it'll be paid for out of the drainage fund that we've already collected. On that note, real quick, I have a rate call with, it's not R and B anymore, it's a rate agency, Thursday, to get our bond rate. Of course, then we have debt in here. This is the spreadsheet that when we start looking at what we're doing, this is the spreadsheets that me and Carrie, sorry, me and Candy look at all the time. I think she has these as just a continually up, because I'm always coming in there and saying, what is this? But I wanted you guys to kind of sort of see what you have debt-wise. You're on the books for 71 mil. Your general fund's roughly 23,000. If you notice, your cliff, 26 used to be a lot, a lot more drastic, and we're starting to spread some of those things out. Your water fund is high, but keep in mind about 10 million of that is Hudson Oaks. And so, we do get, so 10 million of that is already paid for. But your wastewater fund is right at 20 million, and that's the one that's concerning, until we start getting some funds. To your point, you have a great idea about getting all these guys on the system, because it can certainly use it.
Right. But it's expensive to do that.
But the debt will go higher.
The debt goes higher to do it, exactly. Exactly. So, I just wanted you guys to take a look at your debt. This has nothing to do with your debt rate, nothing of that nature. I just want you to know what, this is all the things that we are on the, that we have debt on. Some will be paid off soon. Some will be paid off in a couple of years, some we're going to be going out to 2052. And Candy's still going to be here.
So the road package we put together...
Yes.
Some months ago.
It's in here.
It's in here.
Yes, sir. Maturity date. It's your...
It's the issue date of 1/13.
Yeah.
The 2022 series.
Yeah.
Roads and Parks.
Yep.
Right above the orange line.
Yes.
Okay, any questions on debt or any part of the budget? Because that's the end.
I have, so the notes that I have in here will bump up the promotions in legislative. We're going to true up the Christmas light, you will see a line item in city services for Christmas lights. If nothing else, just so I can get a chuckle when I do this next year.
Any other instructions for Brian?
Good job.
Any other need, any other need for further discussion? We had allocated for, at our next meeting at the end of July, another budget workshop if we needed it.
Yes.
Do you think we need any other discussion?
One of the, so a couple of things, and I just, real quick, final thoughts. This is more for the next meeting. So the CAD information legally is supposed to be here by the 25th. They typically get us to us in the middle of July. Last five years, we've gotten around to July 15th. So I expect to see that information. That'll help me establish what the tax rate's going to be. As I've said, it's going to be somewhere between the no new revenue rate and the voter-approved rate. Again, it just depends what the value comes in at. We have to have a super quorum for both the record vote, or the proposed vote, I should say. So when we do a proposed tax rate, I need a super quorum here. And then, well, obviously, when we have the public hearing and we vote on the budget and the tax rate, I need a super quorum here. Thus, the email that you guys got last week, when can you be here? I have, right now, that we will, at the next meeting on the 26th, we will take a record vote on the proposed tax rate and set a public hearing for August the 23rd. I don't think, right now, as it stands, we will have a super quorum for August the 9th. I believe I got one or two, I know I got two of you guys out. You're here, on the 9th? You're out.
Unknown.
You what?
Unknown.
Unknown. Who else is out on the 9th? Huh?
On the 9th, I'm out.
Okay.
No, I was going to say, I thought it was those two.
I couldn't remember who it was. So...
Mine's American Airlines, good, I'm good. I'll be back.
So, the plan is to do this on the 26th and then make, and then vote on everything on the 23rd of August.
August.
Yes. And I have the, I have the ad ready to go, Pat, so as soon as it's in there, I've just got to get, this budget will raise X amount more than the last budget and so on and so forth.
Well, it's hard to believe that we got to the end of the budget discussion and I didn't ask you, what do you expect the tax rate to be for the M and O?
I expect...
That's the...
I expect the tax rate to be lower.
Okay.
I think M and O will be lower. Interest and sinking, it's going to stay the same, although the CAD, again, they don't factor in this frozen tax levy. And it becomes, it's not really a problem on M and O, it becomes a problem on interest and sinking. Because what happens is, and we did it this year, we adopted what the CAD's tax rate was, which was 26 cents and change. We now have an overage, if you will, of what, 200,000 probably? Which, if you go back and look, is roughly the same amount of the frozen tax levy. So, we got two choices on interest and sinking. We can either go with a higher rate, knowing we're going to overtax our citizens, or we can try to find that happy number that will meet our debt obligations. And I can certainly put that together and put that in and see what it spits out. It's not a really hard thing to figure out, but I just want you guys to know that the CAD may say it's going to be 29 cents and we may actually do 25 cents. If that makes sense.
We've talked about that in the past years.
Yes.
That we can lower it confidently, knowing we'd collect enough for our debt service.
Yes.
But that allows us to keep our M and O where we're...
We would be experiencing in the following fiscal year, a big increase for, that we anticipate, right?
Well, what you're doing is, is that you're saying, we're going to try to hit, the goal is to get your interest and sinking as close to zero as you can every year. Obviously, you want a cushion in there, you know? We've always gone 50 to 75, no more than 100,000 in there. What the state has said is we got to report that as an over-collection and they apply it to next year's budget. So we're trying to get it to zero as much as we can.
Right, okay.
Because it doesn't really functionally work that way. I don't know why the, I know why the state did it, but it's not like I have 200,000 laying over here so I can go pay off this note. It just kind of just collects in the fund.
It's used for next year's debt. It buy downs your rate.
Yeah.
And so, okay, thank you. Any other discussion on budgets?
Appreciate all the great work.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we don't need any motion or anything. Perfect, well, I will say, if there's no other discussion, we'll move on to item number three, which is to accept the retirement letter from Mike Lenore, the fire chief, fire marshal, emergency management coordinator.
Well, this is my last one.
No, it's not.
We haven't approved it yet.
We haven't approved it yet.
You got, you got one more.
One more, okay. It's been an honor serving this city. I really appreciate all the help that you've provided me and the fire department. And it's, it's a bittersweet thing, but it's time to turn the page on the next chapter. And so, what I'm hoping is you'll follow the recommendations that put John Schneider in my place, is what my hope is. That's it.
Well, as Brian said, we are expecting you back at the end of the month. You're here another two weeks, so...
Easier for another three.
Well, at least until the next meeting, so don't think that you're off that easy, you are.
There we go. That'll be a good birthday.
We'll go through the formal stuff tonight and then...
There we go.
Are we going to do a retirement reception for him, even though we discussed that?
Chief Lenore has elected to not do a retirement reception. But we will...
Why would you deny me an rose of such happiness?
I think that has a lot to do with his decline. I will say this, you are going to be an agenda item on July the 26th. And so, you, I still have you until August the 2nd.
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Well, in order that we can move on, we will be seeing you again, but we need a motion to accept the resignation.
Retirement?
Go ahead.
Yeah, retirement.
The retirement letter.
I move to accept the retirement letter from Chief Mike Lenore for the city of Willow Park, effective August 2, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? As I said, we'll see him again and...
We'll see you.
Give some, give some other departing words. All in favor? Motion carries.
Told you I'd get you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to remove Mike Lenore as fire marshal and fire chief. That's just...
This is just pro forma at this point.
Yes. I need a motion to remove him as fire marshal and fire chief.
I move to remove Mike Lenore as fire marshal and fire chief for the city of Willow Park, effective August 2, 2022.
Motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, the next agenda is to remove Mike Lenore as emergency management coordinator.
I move to remove Mike Lenore as the emergency management coordinator for the city of Willow Park, effective August 2, 2022.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. All right, now we have something a little happier. To appoint John Schneider as fire marshal and fire chief.
I'll make a motion that we appoint John Schneider as fire marshal and fire chief for Willow Park.
Second.
Effective August 2nd.
Yes.
Please, I need that.
August 2nd, effective August 2nd. 2022, yes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, congratulations. And the last one, to appoint John Schneider as emergency management coordinator.
I make the motion that we appoint John Schneider as emergency manager coordinator, effective August 2, 2022.
Yes.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you very much, guys.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, John.
All right, the next item is to approve a contingent fee contract with Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott LLP pursuant to Article 103.0031 of the Code of Criminal Procedure. Said contract being for the collection of delinquent, delinquent government receivables owed to the city of Willow Park, and notice of said contract posted with the agenda in accordance with Section 2254 of the Government Code.
I received a phone call yesterday from one of the councils of Purdue asking if we had posted the notice with the agenda out on the bulletin board. And he said, we were not aware. Michelle, you know, did not, you know, they did not relay that to Michelle or myself, that we needed to post that. The posted on the website, you know, and that it was on the packet was good, but they also needed it posted with the agenda on the bulletin board. So with that said, we can take no action and I'll put it back on the agenda for the 26th. And I informed Bruce with Purdue that we will have it on the agenda and that we will post it with the agenda.
Do you need a motion for postponement?
No, we just take no action.
Take no action, all right. Moving on to item number nine, Derek Turner may, will not present. We're going to say Betty Chu for Derek Turner will present an update to the land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, and the proposed updated water and wastewater impact fees. Following the presentation, the city council may consider approving a resolution setting a public hearing to consider an update to the land use assumptions, capital improvements plan for water and wastewater impact fees and proposed water and wastewater impact fees.
Thank you, Mayor Frotem. The action that is required of council this evening is to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing for the city council, and public hearing will not be until September. If you remember, in January of this year, you appointed the Planning and Zoning Commission and one additional member that's, lives in the ETJ to serve as your CIP committee. They will be meeting next week and they will consider the preliminary draft of the land use assumptions and the capital improvement plans as they relate to the water and wastewater impact fee update. And they will also review the proposed water and wastewater impact fees. Following that meeting, they will make a recommendation to the council at your public hearing on those updates and also the impact fees. As I said, they'll meet next Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM. Following their meeting, we will go and place this preliminary report of the CIP, the land use assumptions, and the proposed water and wastewater impact fees on our website. So it will be where anyone from the public can go in and read it. It's kind of a luminous before the September 13th public hearing. Because of the 31-day posting that is required by statute, the resolution you have will set the public hearing for September the 13th. And that's the action that we are requesting this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution to set public hearing for LUA, CIP, and impact fees. Land use assumptions, capital improvement plan, and impact fees.
Thank you, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Betty. The next item is to consider a waiver of penalty and entry... The next item is to consider a waiver of penalty and interest for sanitary sewer lien, May eighteenth, nineteen ninety-four, on property located on fifty-one hundred block IH twenty Service Road North.
Okay, I guess it was the end of twenty twenty. There was similar action taken by the council. There was a sanitary sewer mine installed back end of ninety-two, ninety-three. There were prorata assessments assessed to each property owner along that sanitary sewer mine. The original assessment on this property was six thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. The notice of lien was to Graham and Lynch, which was a predecessor to title. I think if you look at the deed, the warranty deeds, and we included those within, I think the property transferred just about the time the lien was placed on the property and shortly thereafter, and it went to Graham and Lynch. But Doss Properties LLC had already acquired the property. And so the original lien was for sixty-one hundred and ninety-one dollars. You can see at eight percent interest, there was over forty-seven thousand dollars worth of interest that's accrued. Doss Properties would like the council to consider, they are willing, most willing to pay the lien, and they will pay any associated cost as far as preparing the release and the filing and all. Like I said, we, there was a similar property, it was on Stagecoach, was back at the end, I believe, of twenty twenty, early twenty-one, that similar action was taken. And you have the letter, the request letter from them. You have the sewer improvement lien, the notices, the warranty deed. And you can see, we highlighted on the exhibit, and I didn't have Rose put it up, but you can see in your packet, the area where this is, the sanitary sewer mine actually runs in the alley that's back there.
And.
I suspect we probably have other liens like that that are out there. Some of those properties, it does not appear have changed owners.
Obviously, I wasn't here, when was the last one that we approved like that?
In late twenty twenty. And actually, the interest, I was looking, because I looked back on that, it was a very similar amounts. Most of the liens were fairly close, you know? The original liens were sixty-one, sixty-two hundred dollars. And I really don't know what procedures they followed in placing the liens and the notifications. So I'm sure, as I said, that we'll have others come along in the future.
Okay.
And there's no way that they would have known, because that happened just right bef, right before, right after the sale?
Yes, the property, I think the original notice that said, you know, we were going to place a lien on the property, which was required, was filed with the previous owner, but the actual lien itself was not filed until after the property transfer. And so, and, and it was all pretty close. The other one, the property just had, the property endeavor solved, the one on Stagecoach, I remember that. It was the original owner, and he, he was actually not even aware the lien was on the property until it did title one.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve waiving the penalty and interest for sanitary sewer lien on property located at fifty-one hundred block Interstate twenty Service Road North. And they will pay the original lien, six thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-seven cents, as well as the cost for release of lien and recording fees.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, our last item on the regular business is to approve a resolution adopting the ARPA Federal Procurement Policies and Procedures Addendum. Tony.
Mayor Froton and Council, thank you. This was just for a formal adoption of the Procurement Addendum that the city follows already. ARPA just requires that we file a formal addendum for that, because we.
Any questions for Tony? Do we have a motion? I move that the City of Willow Park adhere to the ARPA Federal Procurement Procedures and Procedures Addendum as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, Mayor and Council comments. I think the only thing I was going to ask is if you had a brief update on, we discussed noise ordinance?
Yes. So we had been working with a acoustical engineer who informed us just before the July fourth holiday that he could not meet our requirements and essentially said he can no longer work on this project. So we reached out through another party, through a local resident, and Bill and I will be meeting with another sound engineer tomorrow afternoon at the Ice House to, to maybe pick up where he left off. I don't, hope we don't have to reinvent the wheel too much, but pick up where he left off. Hopefully, we can have some sort of report back to you guys at the, at the July twenty-sixth meeting. That's my goal.
The guy, the firm that backed out, how did we come about getting this guy?
The second guy?
The first.
The one that backed out?
The first one was his, he was referred to us by Buddy Wright, who I believe is one of the residents who spoke out against the noise ordinance.
Someone at one of our council meetings said, I know, and gave that.
Yeah.
Heard that we had this issue and gave the name to me.
I was just curious how we came up with that particular person, okay.
Yeah. The, the other gentleman was referred to by Mr. Steve Bolton.
I don't think I know Steve, but.
Ranch House.
Ranch House.
Oh.
The Ranch House, on Ranch House. I was going to mention the other, the Parks Board will be meeting in August and discussing just several items, so we expect, hopefully later this year, to do a presentation for council on some of the things that Parks has been working on. So we'll look for that in the future. I also would like to say, just, I know we've said this a million times, but I'm so thankful to all parties that helped get Fort Worth Water connected. I cannot imagine what this summer would look like if we were not able to get Fort Worth Water starting last year. It is just refreshing to have a long-term solution in place. Being a long-term resident of Willow Park and having watched summers like this create havoc, it is just so nice that we had so many people, including Hudson Oaks and the City of Fort Worth, work with us to get this solution. So I know we've said it before, but a hundred and five temps daily, it bears repeating today, so.
Yes.
Do we have any other council comments?
So on that note, though, do we have a understanding of how our wells are performing? Are they down pretty significantly, do we know?
No, they're, they're still producing, I mean, they're.
Okay.
They're, they're, we're not stressing. I think if we did not have Fort Worth, you would, Michelle would not be as calm as she is today.
I'm sure, yeah.
You know, they're still producing, we're, we're not stressing them, we're not running on twenty-four seven like we would be.
Yeah, I heard the water levels in the wells were.
In the aquifer?
In the aquifer was down significantly.
We're, we're down at the Trinity, so we're, the, most of the residential wells are in the Plexi. I got that wrong, I got that backwards.
You got it right.
Yeah.
Trinity's deep.
Trinity's deep, yeah. So we got a deep well, most of the residential wells go to the Plexi, and that's, that one always dries up first.
Okay.
Any other council comments?
So, oh, no, no, it's not a comment, it's for agenda item, future agenda item.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, so we're talking about in the budget, how we need to create a policy around what we need to do for promotions?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to see moving forward with that.
Is that a Crystal Pat?
Yeah.
Partnering, okay, so we're directing you to do that.
I also have, Pat and I have discussed a electronic signature policy. Just because everybody's everywhere and all different times, and so I kind of sent over something to him. I think it was yesterday, maybe the day four, it was yesterday, today's Tuesday, to review it. So that'll be something that'll be coming up as well. But we'll also, also get a, something drafted up so you can look at it. Hopefully, we can have it for the next meeting of August ninth.
Okay.
What about, when is our roadwork reconstruction going to start and do we? We have the laser and.
How about them Cowboys?
I ask almost daily.
Yes. I think we will probably have that out to bid. I know the initial plan was to start construction in August, I don't, obviously, that's not going to happen. I think we'll have those projects out to bid, hopefully by the end of this month. I think Derek understands the sense of urgency, at least coming from my office.
Okay.
I, I think I clearly conveyed that this week.
Okay. So assuming they get the bids out, or the, or the R and P done, do we expect to start turning, or?
I would probably say sixty days after.
Okay.
After the bids.
So last time we did that on South Ranch House, we had a plan about traffic and moving all that around.
We will do traffic, yeah, we will, it will follow the same process as we did for Ranch House.
Okay, all right.
Well, and I'll say, that's one of the holdups on getting parks is we had, you know, over five million in this CO. We don't want to start any major parks projects and find out that we need it to complete the road. So we, we don't know exactly, until we get those bids back on that, we're not quite sure where that division line of what goes to parks and what goes to roads will be. So that's kind of kept us waiting on parks of what we could, could do, so.
I'll try to have an update for you, or at least have Derek, if you're on the twenty-sixth, to lay that out.
Okay. City manager comments?
I want to echo what Leah said. I was thinking about this the other day, it's a hundred and five, and normally, my thoughts would be about, are we going to run out of water? And it's not a matter of if, it's when we were going to run out of water. I don't mean this tongue in cheek, but it's refreshing to think there's a power going to stay on. The Fort Worth Water's been a godsend for what we do, and, and I can't thank the staff here enough to, to helping us getting that done. Is everybody, if everybody's okay with this budget calendar, and I'm assuming, we talked about this earlier this week, I'd like to have the budget wrapped up before Labor Day, if, if at all possible. When you start getting into September and it gets really, really dicey, you get two meetings left. So if we can have this wrapped up before Labor Day, that'd be, that'd be great for us. TML, well, they opened up the registration, I think Crystal sent an email today. If you can make the TML, let us know, if you can't, that's fine, too. We're booking rooms and we can cancel and all those other things, but that'll be.
We're working. And we're working, and all my other fellow city secretaries were like, man.
Yes, yes.
Hey, I did good, I was able to get four people in the same hotel.
Not the same hotel room.
No, 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 no.
So that'll be October the fifth, sixth, and seventh.
What is it again?
Fifth.
Fifth through seventh.
Yeah.
Fifth through seventh.
Fifth through seventh, so. That's it, the mayor called me from, from London today, and want to tell us, everybody, good luck. He misses us.
No, he doesn't.
He, he bragged that it was sixty-eight degrees today, and.
I noticed that he wasn't as red in his pictures.
Well, I said some choice words to him, and he told me it was sixty-eight, and it was not a hundred, it wasn't sixty-eight here, so.
All right, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
We have a second, motion and a second, all in favor. Adjourned at seven twenty-four.